This time I'd like to call the meeting of the policy, KCC BPU Policy Committee to order. And ask for approval of the agenda.
You want to do a roll call?
I don't care.
Roll call, Parker.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, we've got a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, move to approve today's agenda.
Second.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries.
At this time, I will turn the meeting over to the chairman. It's Rose Mulvaney.
Chairwoman, sir.
Chairwoman, chairperson.
Want you to fall into the mix of who don't recognize my gender. Morning, just getting started here. So yesterday I sent partial review and red line of the clean version. So, a- and I do think it's important, and I don't know if you guys have had an opportunity, you on staff have had an opportunity to I don't know, last night or today. Well, I didn't know if the fridge is really open, so it's a whole thing, and I'm gonna need to, and
It's meetings?
It's gonna be one of those days.
For sure.
Be here a while to this. So I do think it's really important that everybody's comfortable with definitions. Look, I made up these definitions based on our discussions, or at least what I, what I heard from the discussions, but you guys deal with this every single day. And so if we have, if I have misstated something in the definition, then we need to correct it. And I know that this is extremely tedious, um, but if we're gonna go with definitions, and I think we agree that we are, it's really necessary, so I guess I propose that we start there, um, and, and just go through the definitions, which of course, that one, if we go with my suggestion on this one is to originally I added it as added account holder, and I really think, per our follow-up discussions, I really think it needs to be a secondary account holder. And so I don't know if that definition meets what a secondary account holder is in your guys' view, so we just need to agree that it does, or modify it if it doesn't.
Since we allow more than two, would be better to do additional ones. Do we even have that wording involved?
No.
I mean, if it's
Can it be one or more?
This is in our process procedures.
I don't think secondary inherently means there's only one secondary, too. I think that could still be a, the actual term not the main account holder, but
And to be clear, that is the one that is, is financial responsible, right? So it's not just the, hey, I, I'm just added to the account for whatever reason, it's, I actually am responsible for this account.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess you guys read that and see if you think it's if it works.
Can you make it a little bit bigger, Rob? You know, I can't see.
Thank you. I just want to make sure they're comfortable with the with the language itself before we make that change.
And do we want to have a one definition for account holder and then a second definition for secondary?
Well, we've got a primary account holder down below. So the, we've got a primary and a secondary.
Okay. Put a parenthetical S after holder. And it take that it could be more than one?
Fine by me.
Are we gonna leave the word means in there? We taking that out, like secondary account holder?
On definitions, I always put, this is what this term means in the document. Don't have to, but that's just
Yeah, I did, I just, no, I didn't think in our, in our rate book and things, that's not, it just has the word in the end, it gives the meaning, it doesn't say means, right? Okay, I don't know, let's follow the other definition.
Either way, I think means or a colon probably.
Oh, and if you guys want to use a colon or whatever, I'm fine with that, too.
Is added part of that?
No, it would be, it would be struck.
Okay.
And then obviously, um, realphabetized.
Make that change?
Yes.
Okay, so applicant. Good with that?
Well, is it being applied or repeated?
Hopefully, they're not receiving it before. What, what was that?
So he asked if there's anything else authorized users can do, and I told him we do let them reconnect services like to call in to report the payment and get the services reconnected, they've been covered.
They call us allowed, they're allowed to submit payment on the account?
Yeah, and I wasn't saying that we do. So then once the payment's
There are a lot of times we'll call back and say, I've made a payment, I can reconnect them.
And we will reconnect.
Yeah.
That's the only change we made with them, like if they want to, the customer want to go on, let's pay a set of arrangements, we do not let authorized users do any account changes like that, if it's to get the services reconnected, they will reconnect.
So if that is to just say, I made a payment, you verify. So they're not really doing anything?
None, because the system's gonna do that anyways, yeah.
Can the authorized user be added by the secondary account holder?
Yes, because they're responsible for the account, so you're correct, because she does have it here.
Because right now, as you said, by the original account holder.
Should say Actually, so it should be primary, because it's defined, but, um, primary or secondary account holder?
Yeah.
Yes.
Rob, are you picking that up?
Yep. It's not the original.
Yeah, or secondary.
Do they need to be capitalized?
Primary or secondary?
Yeah.
Yes. So, so an authorized user is not financially responsible, but they have accessed the information, can submit payment, and reconnect services?
That would be covered, not paid.
On the account? Well.
That's why I said I don't want to make that specific, like we won't let them transfer service, I don't want them to take that as their
Well, but I mean, I, so I do think it's important to say what they can and can't, I mean, not can't do, but can do.
Yes, so they reconnect services.
Any issues that are, anyone?
No.
So submit, uh capital S on services, Rob? Yes, sir?
So should we state some of the things they can't do?
No.
It would just be
Yeah.
Do you need to address how they are removed?
How an authorized user is removed?
They're not, I'm sorry, I went back up to the primary and secondary. If I'm a secondary, can I come in and just have my name removed?
We do, as long as the account's paid, uh, current, we will endate that relationship.
And then if I'm the primary account, can I have my name removed and leave the secondary?
Same thing, though, it'd have to be paid current.
And if, and if we're gonna, and I'm fine with that, but I think we need to put that probably in the body versus a definition.
Yeah, I just thought of that, sorry.
Well, but that's what, looking at a clean document, right, you
Right.
Different things now. Angie, I know the definition of Board of Directors has to be pleasing to you. Because it's finally defined somewhere in the documents between the unified government and the BPU.
Thank you, and thank you for, um, for staying after that one, too.
Assuming we interest them in that to give ourselves all the powers we, we always wanted.
I don't believe we can.
Customer service policy doesn't grant us that.
It does not.
And unfortunately, the Charter Ordinance did not clarify between the Board of Directors and the actual utility.
Casably with the exception of, because I'm not sure how else you could interpret subsection K in section three.
Oh, okay.
Personal liability?
That one is clear.
Well, it seems clear. Okay, virtual customer. Made that one up, anyone?
Yeah, but refers to or means.
Ah, there you go, means. Thank you, see?
I mean, you have apartment complex, some are residential, some are
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, what I thought I'm saying for the month, I'm like, if it's an apartment complex, uh, they'll be residential, so you need to say
Are all apartment complexes residential?
If it's the units, yes, so they'll have commercial properties for like the common light areas. Uh, those will be under the commercial locations, but then all the actual parking units are residential.
Including any multi-dwelling unit that is not residential.
Rob, strike two.
Means a customer. Um suggestions on how to deal with that, because we have commercial and non-commercial multi-dwelling units.
That, can you say any multi-dwelling un, or multi-dwelling common areas?
Well, but aren't there whole apartment complexes that actually?
Then they'd be considered residential.
No, no. Do we have any apartment complexes that the utilities are included in their rent?
Yeah, and that's commercial.
Yes, right, so that would be an actual multi-dwelling unit.
So any tenant, including any I lost the thought. I, I mean, I think you could you, the clarification could be tenant versus landlord paid. Including any multi-dwelling unit. Any landlord, landlord
Any services paid by landlord for a multi-dwelling unit?
Yes, any services or or any services where the account holder is the landlord in a multi unit.
Let's just get it down and then that is the first word.
It's still be residential. It just depends how they have it.
What did I say?
How would the landlord
Isn't it still be residential?
Services in the, for the landlord.
Do we have any condos in Wyandotte County condominiums?
Well. I thought we did, it's one of those old school, wasn't one of the old school
Yeah, I think so, but yeah, major heads.
Yes, I think those are condos.
Is commercial defined in the rate application, man?
Those would be
Instead of videos, we probably
Old tie.
The same, the long unit, but it wouldn't be a land that would assume that.
Yeah.
And it's not like that. If that was still have reverse, until they get another tenant in there, then the landlord will go in until
Is industrial considered a subset of commercial, or is it, it's
It's, I mean, in the rates, it's its own thing. So we call it commercial in our rate manual. Customer using electrical water service in the conduct of an enterprise or activity in space occupied and operated for commercial or institutional purposes.
No, there was a definition.
But
The rate
That, that still doesn't
No.
Differentiate between
This is more from a rate perspective.
And to Rob's point, we may need to also carve out industrials from that, too. If that's its own rate category.
Does this set of customer service policies apply to electrical customers?
Be non-residential? Is that what you're?
Well, does this set of customer service policies apply to industrial customers? Okay. So we needed definition for industrial, although I've never seen it used anywhere.
I think we call everything non-residential is why.
We do. And then when I was trying to def, further define something yesterday on the non-residential part, where we're trying to, you know, like, bring in, uh, home builders, contractors, you know, that whole subset, we gotta call them something, I don't know what to call them, even, you know, home renovators. I mean, I want to call them contractors, big C, but then say what we mean by that. I don't know. It's just gonna make, and I know you don't believe me, but I really am trying to make less words.
I do believe you.
I mean, if you, if you can see what they've done.
About if I had more time, your life would be shorter.
Look, I mean, nobody wants to revisit this again for a long while, I know, so we've, we've been at it a while. So we've got to figure out a way to differentiate, I mean, maybe we just keep it at non-residential location.
Okay.
I mean, maybe that's the easiest way to do it. Except for inter-industrial customers.
Unless you just identify it non-residential and you include commercial and industrial in that definition.
I mean, did they get anything special from any different treatment on
No, I mean, they they're still the same.
So do all non-residential customers have deposits in, in assessed?
Or they have charity bonds or letter credits or something like that?
Well, and I'm just thinking, do we call this subset now instead of commercial, do we call them non-residential, like all caps, non-residential?
I, I think that would be
It might be easier.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's a bank draft, not AC.
So Rob, under late payment charge, new one, non-residential customer? Well, we're taking our commercial customer altogether. Since we can't seem to figure out how to define it. Seems
Let's just take it in.
It seems
Can't be fine.
Hang on, see it? So if we say means a customer who receives services at a non-residential location, including industrial locations, does that solve it? Or do you want to just include industrial as part of non-residential?
I, I would say
So just ended it non-residential? You guys agree with that?
You've got one too many S's.
I'm striking these.
Yes. Just, yeah, leave it in, strike through for now, please. And don't, like, permanently delete it.
The definition on a customer. For an ongoing relationship, that's true, but we also have customers that have just received our engineering services from us and stuff. All right, but they're not like a monthly customer, but they haven't paid us money, so do
Do, does this policy apply to them?
Well.
Engineering services, customers who
You're getting engineering services, right?
Engineers.
Considered a customer?
No.
Okay.
They're, they're not Do you set up an account for somebody that has a temp pen?
Have you this?
Okay.
Issues, customer service.
So do they receive electrical or water service?
They get it temporary electric.
Do they pay us for that?
Yes.
To their card.
So they
They are a part-time customer.
Well, so, so do we want to say a customer means a person or entity that receives, instead of saying maintains an electrical water account, receives electrical water service?
That, yeah.
So from the, the KCC, it says a customer is an end user, in this case, it was for Kansas Gas, an end user of natural gas, for which company has approved an application for service supplied under company's tariffs. Now, we, I mean, we could use an end user, and then they don't define commercial versus industrial, they have residential versus non-residential.
When's the last time the KCC visited there? Nineteen ninety-seven?
Do we want to start?
Well, I mean, I would be happy if I did.
I mean, it was what, twenty-twelve?
Okay. No, I'm not saying, I mean, it actually, that, those definitions work, for sure.
It works, it works.
So the one I have pulled up says issued December twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, now I don't know if there were changes made, but it said effect, effective June So if, they may just be using the same one, like you said, from twenty-twelve, and just put a new date on it.
A customer means a person or entity that receives electrical water services from KCBP.
We can change person or entity to end user.
Whatever.
Yeah, an end user that receives
It's an user, I've
Uh, end user, yes.
Maybe A in, instead of A.
In the terms and conditions. Yeah, let us know.
I know who does those things up there.
Put your comment to me, Abby.
No, it, it is hyphenated in here, um, but Rose said it should not be hyphenated.
Yeah, so I mean, do we want to mirror that? If we're gonna start, do we want to mirror that except for the tariff part? And I don't care.
It doesn't matter, I just thought it for, if it helped guide us in the direction we were wanting to go.
Anyone?
Works for me. I'm, I'm honestly good at your way. These policies apply to somebody who steals water or power?
Are they a customer?
They're not.
They still nuts diversion. We can't say
The rest of the policies apply, and then starting also, like, what I'm saying is rather than somebody who's been approved for receiving services, someone who consumes services from you would
If Lori's stealing power, can I get put on her account? I'm not sure, that's a really good question, though.
Put you at the secondary on my account.
I think at that point, it's
Round on this guy? Get through customer?
Do we want to change receives to, well, I mean, receives actually works to, receives consumes electrical water services from BPU account to
I think that's fine, and I actually think the last part is, um, a customer may also be referred, I think that that's not necessary. On a twelfth read of it.
It was receives, dude.
I am.
Yeah, it works. We should have like a bell to ring every time we delete things out of this.
Ringing, and it should. Of course, I did add a couple of definitions, so um, customer service policy, Rob, you see what I did throughout the document, and that was refer to this one time as the customer service policy caps. So, we good with that?
Do you want me to check out a general policy applying?
No, I don't know. I mean, that, it refers, the customer service policy refers to this document.
Yes. Yes.
And then the fee schedule following that means the other document, and I would add document at the end of that. I I apparently did not add that, so. There's an added word back in, sorry. On fee schedule. Okay. Uh, here's the big one, word I absolutely cannot stand, the final or final. Um, have no idea if this is the correct definition of it. The C in customer on the first line, C in customer uppercase. Okay, you guys are talking amongst yourselves. All right, now I like you. Come back as a group.
Take out the final words, it means the final termination, just saying means the termination.
But it, how is it not the final?
Because it could reconnect.
Yeah. But it doesn't.
There could be numerous finals. I agree. Thank you.
So is is this where the origination of final final comes from, Angie? It was not.
It's a finite.
Dad's far, it was not in.
It's right.
Henry did not come up with it. It was, it was literally utility service. Got it. Oh, okay. Uh, second sentence, okay? What has that need to be revised? You guys don't have laptops? Good night, Irene.
So I was marking on the paper. But yes, the laptop is up. Didn't want to leave and go grab. Give the second line.
I got that close to what it actually means. That's fantastic. Can I have a bell for that?
Too many words.
But we did take out the word that you added in previous.
That's true.
So balance each other out.
That's right. Um, okay, and Rob, uh, second line, they're voluntary on customer's capital C. Customers' part, capital C, yeah. I can't imagine that anybody's going to have a problem with the force majeure event definition, but.
Uh, so other customer service, other policies could in.
I'm sorry?
Could others, could other policies force this to bind on account? Other than. So rather than saying we're pursuant to. Possessive as policy pursuant to B P.
Are you talking about like if there is a issue there where the city may say that we have to turn the service off? Yeah, fire, it's something like that.
That's. I guess.
That's what I'm saying, so.
I think it's an electric. So because if they say don't email. There's a fire and services because they hold the electric water.
So after customer. Or another applicable.
Just K C K B P policies.
Or published casing B P policy.
Are they all published, Rob?
Or just. At the first part of that sentence, such termination may be voluntary on a customer's part. Would it work to put such termination may be voluntary per customer request?
Voluntary by a customer's request? Or involuntary pursuant to Casey.
That's not like what they do is their request, we stop service. Want to say that sounded.
On the last part, where you added K C B P policy, it's got to be or other.
Maybe just in 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 the. I'm gonna do away with words, maybe just scratch the customer service policy and just put in B P U policy, because customer service is a B P U policy.
It it is, but. This, this specific part, well, I I don't want to be brief. Everybody wants to be brief, except she and I. We want to be correct and transparent.
Which brings me to what about a court order? Is that addressed in our policies? Do we need to be more? General than just the B P policies? Because if we've received a court order. That we needed to switch the account. I don't know that we addressed that, but I would say. Or other. Or other, you know, regulation law or. Is it too big? Termination may be voluntary or involuntary. Leave it at that? Yes, is that too vague?
I think it's vague.
Okay. Then I would see a general. Regulation law or court order.
So when the U G condemns property, they don't necessarily have to go through the court system.
For condemnation.
So to hang the tag on unfit for.
Well, unfit, they can, they can hang the tag and fit, but condemnation is when we take the property. And that has to go.
I'm glad.
Of course.
So if they just deem it unfit, meaning the residents have to evict them, B P, they have to terminate the service or.
Right, so I think lawful rule, law, regulation, or court order.
That broad enough? Lava rule, comma, regulation, don't put other.
Yep.
All right.
And regulations singular.
Law singular or court order.
What's the difference between a lawful rule and a law?
At some, some.
It's between a charter ordinance and an ordinance.
Some requirements by agencies are are rules, but they have the effect of law, but they're not actions. It's a law.
Rob, you're getting pretty good.
Are you guys okay? Angie, are you okay? What's that read? You want to modify that?
I'm fine with that.
Staff, are you fine with the rest, the rest of that?
I'm fine with the kind of work we ended on even my sports.
Okay, force majeure event, anybody have any issues with that?
Uh, on the last line, restricting the operation or delivery of services, I think we should add. Because if it, if a force majeure event impacts our transmission line, then our services, but we can't deliver.
Fine by me.
We need the, or services.
I'm fine either way. If you want to take out the three letters, take out three of them. Uh, definition of K C B P U?
We put administrative in front of agency.
What does that mean?
It's.
I mean, really, I.
Right, that's what it is, an administrative agency.
I mean, I copied that from what the previous policy, so.
Ordinance records administrative agency, and then between, it's not one at Kenny and Kansas City, it's slash the county. Or backlash. It is in different places.
Federal I D number is.
Do you want to work back?
It is.
Forward slash.
I don't even know which is which.
That's four.
Okay.
That's the top of the.
Top down.
And do we want to take out?
It's leading for residential, commercial, and industrial since.
We sure do, and probably put non-residential. Perhaps we ought to, I don't know, capitalize these terms now, capital R residential.
I think since. Were you talking about taking customers out, where it's repeated three times? Taking out commercial, you know, because we struck commercial.
Residential and non-residential customers. Content, there's going to be problems with the way we say designated areas, Wyandotte County, Kansas. Surely that will be, should we say, territory? I don't know. Again, I copied this from the prior policy.
Of course, like, I can get online. I can check email, but I can't get in line.
I have trouble.
Do we supply water to Shawnee? Think we barely cross there. We also go out to Southern Leamont, Johnny, so, so we got wholesale sales. Got wholesale sales power and Johnson County through our border law agreement.
We also have a section where we could live in our electricity in Johnson County.
Right, that's. Is it only in Wyandotte and Johnson?
Shawnee, but the core electric system is K C K. But but what you have there should be, is the designated areas of White County. And the water is.
No, we just say in designated service areas.
Yeah, yeah.
Not be specific.
Yeah.
In the ordinance, because we've used, like, I've seen the name used so many different ways. But it says an administrative agency known as the Board of Public Utilities of the Unified Government.
And it's the Board of Public Utilities, is that what you said?
Well, right, so I guess the question is, what, what do you want to, do you want to use K C B P U in here, B P U? Like, we, we use a lot of different things to refer to the utility.
I think keeping it K C B P U for everybody's reference purposes is fine.
Okay, I mean, I agree, we just pick one. Oh, I think whatever is fine, because then it's defined. From a legal perspective, it's B P.
So there's many B P U's throughout Kansas. So that's why we chose the term case B P U'd and distinguish us from other B P U's.
I mean, this is the definition of this thing within our policy, so does it have to match the charter ordinance?
No, I think you can take out, so I was just reading it, really, because.
You just take out.
I take out what.
Agency of the Unified Government.
Yeah.
You got this, Kansas City?
Take out known as, take that back out.
Yes.
The Unified Government of White County, Kansas, Kansas.
If you wanted to use the official name one to be Board of Public Utilities of the Unified Government. Repeat that again, administrative agents.
I'm against my government twice.
Well.
Of the Unified Government and administrative agencies of the Unified Government.
So what it is, though, I mean, and you don't have to put all that in, but the the official name from the ordinance is Board of Public Utilities of the Unified Government. And it refers to it as an administrative agency of the unified government. So I get that that's very redundant. If you want to use the official title once, then that would be the place to put it.
When was that charter ordinance done? I mean, really, I'm not even trying to be a jerk here. It's just, it it's. Just, that sounds ridiculous, right?
I mean, I.
I mean, it is what it is, but.
Yeah, I was just, if you were referring to it correctly in the definition section. It is the Board of Public Utilities of the Unified Government.
Okay, so everything that's up there, is that the proper way to refer to it?
I mean.
Double unified government, which is fine. Are we, are we okay up to Kansas City, Kansas with, does that match the charter ordinance then?
So really, we're not K C B P U, we're B P U of the Unified Government.
Your B P of the Unified Government, so you can. So here's what it is, and you guys can decide what you want to include. I'm not saying you have to use all of it. But the. It is, the title is Board of Public Utilities of the Unified Government. And what it is, is an administrative agency of the Unified Government. So.
Just find in the terms of document, I don't know.
But you're defining what K C B P U is, so you don't have to use both of those, but those are the two.
Shouldn't we have a semi-colon after Kansas City, Kansas?
If we're, I mean, either match the charter ordinance or don't, so if we're going to ask the charter ordinance, does that have some like column in the chart?
No, so. The charter ordinance reads, within the organization of the Unified Government, there shall be an administrative agency known as the Board of Public Utilities of the Unified Government. So that's the, that's the language in there.
K C B P U is the electric and water utility of K C K slash one account.
Saying that this, after this, this implies a sort of supporting clause to this, right? So we're defining. Board of Public Utilities Unified Government, so we start a subclause, that needs to end when we return back to explaining what it is. Right, so we we take a break to define this part, so I think we need a semi-colon there to then come back to the topic.
Can we say?
Yes, and then we can take it out.
Well, and I think you can.
And then just. And then put a period after Kansas, and we could just say K C B P U provides.
Okay.
Water and water service. I should not get dinged for these words being added.
We're all here witnesses.
Start.
Wait, I see which ones dissolve first. I have a day job, so I'm good.
I agree, but. And KC BPU provides electric and water services to residential, non-residential customers. We need the in-between and designated, or is it in-designated service areas good enough?
Without it.
Okay, it's for some of the distancing.
Late payment charge or not?
Well, we call it late payment charge in the document.
Are we on that one?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Hey, you guys, why don't you guys come up with the late payment charge? I'll come up with literally every other definition in here.
But the charge when the account becomes delinquent.
They charge on a past due account? Or is it delinquent?
Maybe if it's past due.
Wouldn't necessarily be delinquent at that point, right? The link's just passed due. Their accounts passed due, they wouldn't necessarily be delinquent to get a late charge.
They are delinquent. Yeah, I said, then we were saying, then you'd have to define delinquent.
Sure, I thought delinquent was when, as soon as it become late, and then.
You'd be delinquent, but you're just not eligible to disconnect.
Yeah.
You can use word delinquent.
Need to find delinquent. Give me like a mountain view or something.
I mean, is there a Red Bull?
Past due.
Yeah, maybe we do.
Would add anything that past due doesn't, I feel like past due is more. I don't know, on the nose, like, plain reading, let it goes, okay, I know my account is past due.
It should be assessed, yes.
It should be.
The delinquent account means a situation where a borrower is late or overdue on a payment.
You can just say after or past the due date. Maybe that's what he'll define, it's past the due date. I don't know, I'm sorry.
Read that.
Let's check out the link one altogether and just deal with past due and let's see what we got.
Again.
So delinquent account says a situation where a borrower is late or overdue on a payment.
Where are they borrowed?
That's a delinquent account. So if we're talking about what the meaning of delinquent is, a delinquent account is a situation where a borrower is late or overdue on a payment.
Is what we have now inadequate in any way?
Charge assessed for an account that is late or past due or.
Like, they get figured out, I've got one more thing to add.
What is the definition of delinquent?
It may be on our bill. It may be on the back of the books.
Oh, definition.
Let me log into my meter dot B Q dot com.
Well, as I say, if we have it on.
And I couldn't get in from somewhere.
You know, sometimes you get that set up all over. No more late payments.
For the bill, once we need to see the language.
Are you, are you on the bill already?
I'm still trying to go paperless and every time I enter my email address, it tells.
Have you tried on the new?
You guys manually do it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, then I'll just wait and see if I get a bill. I have not successfully done it myself.
Okay, it's not on there?
No, I meant on like David, remember on the website, don't we have explaining your BP usual?
Yeah.
Okay, can you look on the website as well?
Surely you have something better to do to do.
There's so many things.
If you had to go to the dentist and have it.
Is it beyond the sack of that page?
Yeah, that's right, pull up the bill first.
Yes, make sure that.
Everyone's like a.
Is it anywhere else on our website? Long as it's not, then whatever we put first. Late payment charge.
That late payment charge means the fee assessed when a customer bill is past due. How's that work? Anyone?
Perfect.
Okay, one make that.
A fee that is assessed.
When a customer bill is past due.
I like it.
Residential or non-residential.
As described, no one's gonna, no, this is serious, as described in the fee schedule.
When it is past due, as described in the fee schedule. And then you want me to add the P C dash two hundred.
That's the purpose of having capital F B, capital S schedule. You're never going to have to add those ever again. Welcome. Okay, non-residential customer, we've already gone over, non-residential service. Pretty self-explanatory, any issue there? Primary account holder, I don't really know if that means the original applicant at service at a location, so that may not be right. There's definitely a distinction as to what the primary account holder is, I just don't know what that distinction is.
Well, we distinguish it when we sign a customer based on that as a better credit.
Could it be means the responsible party for services delivered to a patient?
Secondary account holder is also a responsible party. I mean, I, I agree with you, but because. We just change it with the word primary? I don't know.
It's the individual who services or in their name. Redefine primaries, delete account.
It's not the original applicant.
But I said, said I didn't think that was right. I'm the one who was actually reading these, so.
The account that is primary. What is the differentiator? I think secondary account holder is financially liable, they can.
So if you're primary, like, like we just launched my meter, if you register the account, it has to be registered under the primaries information. And like, if they're going to make a payment over the phone, we use the verify social for the payment, they would have to put in the primary account holder social. We can't take any secondary.
Does that help at all?
I just keep circling for the word primary is the button descriptor, which is not particularly helpful here.
The main applicant for service at a locations.
Same as original, but I guess it's not the original, though. I, I did, I looked it up because it like, it says from a bank's perspective, the main user of an account.
I think I actually like principal account holder.
Oh, yeah.
Plan account holder.
Yeah, she said principal.
No, the principal account holder for services at a location. Principal account holder instead of original applicant.
That would be the principal name on account for service, so that we're not using that as a combined term in the definitions.
No, I was just saying, primary says the simple definition, it means first, and since we have a secondary, so there's actually a first person and a second person. So, so principal is fine, because it just means primaries means that they're the first person listed on the account. The other person is the second person listed on.
I'm good with it, and I'm good with keeping account holder in there, if everyone else is. Yes. Thanks for checking, though.
Yeah.
Like Google's not working, like, I've really checked my.
Okay, we moving on? Residential customer, gotta take out refers to and put means a. I guess A is already there, so means. Residential service. Service. We could take out the extra words and put KC BPU and service. If.
There we go.
About that. Ring the bell, Brett.
Are we going to move secondary account holder down to there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then when it reorders, it'll automatically be there, right?
I'm sure when Rob does it, that will automatically do it, yes.
Yeah, when we accept all the things more.
Uh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's.
Should that be consumed?
Rather than.
No, because, I don't know if you know, there's a couple of other Cs that. Assess to an account that have nothing to do with use, so. Right? So should it be? I, I guess in the, in the context of the way we use usage here, it must be used.
Really don't want to open this camera, so please feel free to turn around and shut off. He's a gay, AC BPU services, he's a better customer, but we also bill for U G services. Is that usage?
Yeah, it's not.
It's not usage, but I don't have to call it out at any place.
Really good point.
Does that need to be fleshed out in this file? I mean. What is the, when someone calls us, as they do, complaining about a U G charge? Are those things that are, I guess dictated by this policy, or is that we refer them back to the U G?
Well, they have to pay them, or else they'll get their water and light shut off, I think you know that, so.
But if they have questions about.
Right, so we'll explain the theme and then we'll direct it to the.
But isn't there someplace in here that references U G charges, if I'm mistaken? Maybe it doesn't, and if it doesn't, we should. And we probably should. Make it clear that. I mean, those are part of the charges of the bill.
Uh, rates and charges, says the council be charged monthly minimum charges, including unified government charges.
We have some customers that receive U G charges and no BPU charges.
U G customer.
I mean, we could just define unified government charges, there's only one use of it, though, in this document.
So when we're referring to service in this document, though, do we, so we're talking about the service that we provide?
We are, because we're only talking about electric and water, but that's a good point, maybe we should do it.
What about engineering services?
He broke it up. He broke it up. I.
Slam it.
Slamming my face.
Slam it. When we backfill for charges, that would include charges from unified government on our bill?
Yes.
I guess there's two questions here, then, do you want to define unified government charges? And if so, are we then inserting that into other policies where we haven't specifically listed it? Right now, it's only used one time, and it just says including unified government charges.
Usage, but the stuff for usage is just our stuff.
That's right, but, but charges do refer to something different, and so. Um, I mean, maybe we consider, let's put a placeholder for a definition for charges, capital C. Um, and we'll just revisit it, how's that?
Beautiful spot.
Amazing how that works.
Hi, Howard.
No.
Well, I like a different person, we don't know. Need to come back to it.
I can just say it, Howard. There's a lot of comments, you think we'll remember?
I wanna think we will.
I mean, there were scrolling firm.
Hour and twelve minutes later, folks, and we are to section one.
All the definitions?
Wow.
Um, one dot zero one, clearly. Uh, again, I deleted words. Well. Added a couple in, one dot zero two. Based on definitions. Any issues with any of that, any comments, any additional revisions?
Good with it.
Okay. Um. One dot zero three, you can see the revision I made at the very, very end. Um, it just, for some reason, read better to me to add that language, but I'm married to it, just.
Spelt it out better than just drives to understand, makes sense to me.
Um, and at the very end, there, capital S in service, it should be a capital S, Rob.
Then.
I mean, this should probably. Service customer are gonna be. I didn't catch all of these over the weekend.
They are, you think they're still gonna have like.
It just, it's gonna depend on the context, so I think that that's gonna have to be a, a individual review of these, unfortunately. Little comment there to address capitalization or something. Review for capitalization.
You want in use hyphenated?
I don't, um, I don't like it at all, but. I was trying to.
In user above, and we did not use a hyphen. Yeah. Insistence, you say?
So, what would a non-in user be?
Uh, so technically, an in-user is the last user, right? So, a non-in user would be, like, where, a place where they resell, or that the landlord pays for, and then charges the customers, but it's illegal in this county to do that, right? The only utility that's allowed is self-services, so.
Correct.
Technically, anybody that we bill is our.
Email me a link to this meeting. Email me a link to this meeting.
Yes.
I will knock out a couple things, I'll, I'll tell you from my viewers.
Can I do that?
Need some help?
You can divide this whole large paragraph into. Where I would break it up as we have, it may be necessary.
Don't make privacy policy.
Words in there, I would say.
Okay, I think that's.
We are not on to basic information, but.
One, everybody knows the new rule. We all, I know, I practiced it month.
Sorry, emailing bill, which is something I needed to change.
One dot zero three, I think Jerry is suggesting that we break the. Um, paragraph into two paragraphs, and we begin the second paragraph is with it may be necessary. Jerry, did I hear that correctly?
I, I think it can be reduced down to basically consent after it may be necessary.
I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
But.
Be reading what I had, and I should have sent this out last night. Where it says, um, it may be necessary. You just read this out, in certain circumstances, such as by law, legal process, litigation, or request from public and government authorities. KC BPU may need to disclose some customer information, end of sentence. As a municipal utility, KC BPU is covered by the Records Act. Officially, KC BPU may disclose customer information to determine that disclosure is necessary appropriate for national security law enforcement. That is important. And I have that moreover. Disclosure of customer information may occur, deemed that reasonably necessary to enforce KCB's terms and conditions or protect operations or users. They also be less, especially voluntary, provide additional information to better understand and needs by service. I got that down to three sentences.
Sounds longer than that. It sounded longer.
All right, well, we can.
What are other reasons of public importance? Why would we, what are, what is one of, an example of that, where we would disclose customer information?
Or. Or subpoena.
Other reasons of public importance would be lawful order, right?
Right, I'm trying to think of.
It couldn't even be a, if I government asks for information about customers. Information about, uh.
Is a municipal utility not governed by PII rules, laws?
It is. But, yeah. I think it is, very likely. Could be.
But basic accounts, so, under the Open Records Act. Commercial, non-residential accounts are open. So, but like, things like the tax number and those would be, um, redacted. And then residential accounts may be disclosed, or maybe, um, but we can decide to disclose them.
I guess I'm, I still don't know what other issues of public importance are. I, I mean, I don't, and so I think if we're all saying, you know, look, national, national, yeah, national security is one thing, right? Uh, lawful order, right, from any, you know. Any court of jurisdiction, you know, whatever, all good.
Could there be a health department issue that, where they don't have a court order yet, I'm just thinking of scenarios.
I know.
If the fire department needs a name on the account, not just services shut off, but if they're asking who's on the account.
Right, for a welfare check, or.
Or anything like that, would we hand that over as well?
You know.
At least typically.
We're just thinking of ideas that they might wanna know who's on the account, or. Like.
They can fix utility to bust it out.
Well, like, to see if they'd moved, or if they were still there, I don't know. I'm thinking of weird.
Is code enforcement part of law enforcement, or is it an administrative?
No. Right.
No, it's not part of.
Right, so if they, if they're code enforcement, you do something.
Um, they could, well, we could give that, yes.
Wouldn't that be a request from a governmental authority?
What about?
They have that information before.
Oh, I, I would guess go back to the, like.
Except Jerry's definition and move on.
Jerry, can you send me your definition, please? How long are the sentences?
Are you gonna insert Jerry's here now?
Uh, if you guys tell me to.
Well, I mean, I'd like to, I think, see it versus hear it.
Yeah.
I mean, it sounded good. Jerry, it sounded great.
Someone. That went already. What are you sending?
So. Um. Is, is. Is, is there a privacy policy that is separate than this for BP, that the BPU adheres to? And is that privacy policy publicly available?
I think, is it on the website?
I have one on the website.
Internet-like privacy. It's that on internet.
Yes, and I do get.
So that's only a, except a use policy, it's not an actual privacy policy.
I think so, this is an area we are efficient on.
So this is what's.
I mean, 'cause I was going to suggest just to refer to the policy if it's publicly available, right? Just a URL and take all the words out.
So this is what's out on the website for privacy policy.
Travel. Yeah, no, this doesn't cover it, 'cause I've looked. This is not, this is not tell us what, that's right.
Internet.
Now, I would. Question that no good deed goes unpunished, so when we move beyond the Open Records Act. Um, you know, as we, we were sued, we were successful in defending the suit, but it took five years. Because they claimed a right to privacy that didn't exist, and, you know, they try and use.
Slide on the back to that case, so I don't.
Um, they were bad. I mean, not for us, right, like, it should never have gone on that long. Trying, uh. It's crazy facts.
But I mean, just like any other, like, if I looked up ever G's right now, right, they're gonna tell me what their customers or, what their privacy policy is, applicable to customer information.
Right.
Like, and I understand that they're an IOU, but like, we are a utility company, so in that respect, we should be no different.
Right, we just need to be very careful that it does not, that all the exceptions that we've noted. We don't guarantee privacy where we, where we can't guarantee privacy.
I just think there, BPU needs to have a privacy policy over its customer information, I guess that's where I'm at right now. And it's now, which is why I was asking, is there one, and if there is one. Can we just refer to that versus this, but it sounds like. There may not be, so. Okay.
I don't think we need the word sound here for customer information, so KC BPU may need to close customer information.
Say, Rose, can you hear me?
I can.
So we, uh, we started, we got some preliminary drafts on customer service policy protection. It's never gotten advanced to the board, and I'd really need to go back and resurrect that, and then sit down and go through it, uh, again, but, uh. Uh, we haven't visited that in, in some time, but it is still in a preliminary draft for, but we, we have started to work on that.
Okay.
Align you added, Rose, for KC BPU may require the customers, should that get appended to the end of Jerry's, or should it?
Jerry's has it.
So is the red to get rid of all the black? Or an additional replacement of the second.
I think it's.
It is, I just have it. Replacement of the second part.
And even the first paragraph they have there would be deleted.
Oh, okay.
So it's to replace all?
All of it. Okay, never mind, sorry, I gave you bad information.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just saying, so you wanted to leave this. Oh, no, yeah.
Oh, I missed the first, I see, you meant to pererep in yours, I just.
Yeah.
All of that. Before the I.
Same as. Do you do another enter? Okay.
This be a semi-evidence, we use comments for a list. Next thought.
No.
Would that be considered a sentence?
Time, always timing. It's an economy of sentence.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm good with the revised, uh, version from Jerry, I think, but I wanna, I want some time to be able to digest that a little bit. I mean, it's, has, looks like it has all the highlights.
Yeah, I agree. Could recall that tentatively adopted the minute to go back and review it.
Tentatively adopted only by the policy committee and by the full board. Hey, moving on.
Other conditions of service, do we have any issues where it's a emancipated minor versus eighteen years' age? Do we, have we had a situation where, where we have an emancipated minor who's not eighteen years' age?
We did, and then we sent it to Angie. I can't remember what we did, but we have had that.
Yeah, because that's something that I've encountered before. And so we usually use eighteen years of age or legal adult. Just the thought.
Yeah.
I think we have had that. Like we discussed.
Hey, why don't we take a quick break while they're doing their changeover?
Okay.
I love the addition of.
So.
Sounds like.
But I've got a question before that, so.
We kind of.
Yes.
By.
I don't know.
You're not a diet.
You'd like that. Yeah, I mean, I'd say in front of the.
Yes, but we put it in writing. Yes. Now, whether that happened. And we've done that.
You want me to do this and you'll be going?
Just wow.
This come up.
Good in ten years.
Eighteen years of age. Needed to be there. Yeah, right. So that's what we ran into that issue.
I have an account. I, I said, you have. Are you looking?
Perspective is everything.
On the Android. Okay, yes. That's what I got you signed up for, so.
You know, anything I can do, I feel there's something.
You've got that, you've got that invite email from, okay, so if you can get that on your phone. No, you should have one directly from them, not one that I sent. You should have one from App Center.
I did have one.
And that's the one you, that's the one you need to load on your phone, Mark's.
But I know, I'll get a bear. I, I just didn't think I had the other one yet either. I thought she had something for me to be aimed.
Yeah, and now if you scroll down and click on sign up.
Good.
I rock, but I don't think you go do what you have to do. And then I embrace.
Is your schedule to, oh, I don't care about that. Uh, scroll down. Create a freaking. Create a freaking, yeah, so personal foundation schools. That's what you want?
I use personal.
Yeah. Continue as Jane. Right. Yeah, no, and that's why, and that's what you're doing. We're sideloading something, so the security is a little, a little funky, but it's because you were beta testing.
Oh, okay.
Um, so that should.
Yeah, I haven't been bothered by Pam as to.
You're part of your phone's trying to install an app from a source. You can change this instead.
See, I've had to stop and stop. Like, he asked us. Very kind of. But I wouldn't do our.
Yeah, you, yeah, and I don't blame you at all, right? So normally you shouldn't.
Because I normally don't. Always just put it out there.
You should log in with your jam.
You know.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Sorry. Attorney's fees are.
Attorney's fees.
Yeah. But I don't put.
And let him know that.
I do, like, I don't put the lawsuits. That, um, you know. If there's a mixture like.
Not a surprise.
Okay. So. Yeah, uh, you still time. That's fair. There is.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
I think we just didn't have the note address on it.
No, I just go through now, but thank you.
He's looking, he'll take it, he said. Ready to. Wait, that's what you want. So two dot zero one, in the last sentence, I think we had agreed to add, uh, less than at least eighteen years of age or a legal adult. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. The question I had on the sentence before it, will this always be a new customer prior to accepting a service application? I just didn't know. I mean, you gotta pay all your outstanding debt. If we're talking about a service application, I just don't know how that works.
That could be the same of existing. You want to be a new customer.
So, walk me through that.
So like, say I, um, like transfer service capacity balance. Did maybe, maybe count, correct?
Yeah. That makes sense. Thank you. I don't have anything else there. I don't know if anybody has any reaction to the edits that I made otherwise in that, um, outside of the one we just added today.
Police department issues, they do have an ID that they will issue and they do vet it. Would you accept that? It'd be a picture ID issued by the police department.
We've not accepted that in the past. So a municipal ID?
It's not a municipal ID. It's, uh.
I don't know that we've, it's ever been.
It has tougher issuing standards than a municipal ID.
He says a police, they issue a municipal ID?
It's not a municipal ID.
What is it? What is it called? Let's just say.
It's a, it's the police department, and I don't know much about it, but I know that their standards for issuance are higher than, um, they vet it. So it is a valid ID, but I don't know, they don't issue very many of them, but the police department will issue a photo ID.
Okay, hold on a second. So for two dot zero one, do they issue them for people who are not legal adults and or
Yeah.
not over eighteen? Okay, so that'll be maybe germane to the discussion in section four, where we talk about what's acceptable.
I thought, sorry, I thought we had moved.
No.
Hold on.
I had moved on. I was, I had moved on. We had, that we were. I'm just getting this.
Because what would they use to vet it?
I can get you all that, but I know that it is, I know that it is a much stronger vetting process than, than the proposed municipal ID.
So you think you're putting me through the ringer when I sign up for service? I go to PD, they're like, full KBI investigations.
So is the question to maybe consider accepting that as a replacement for the other or just include it as one other piece of identification?
Well, Angie said she could give me.
I can get more information on it.
Just like to see it first.
Okay, so. I'm assuming it would be one more item added to that list.
Right.
Displacing anything else on that list.
Correct. It would not remove anything. It would just be.
Okay.
If you want to, if you want to consider it, I can get more information on it.
So if, if a customer only has that and then we have to collect, will that prohibit our abilities to go and collect or, or not?
But.
I, I don't, I won't know until I see it and then we can check with our collections agency and the, and the setup program to see if this is something that they will allow for us to send.
Let me get, let me get some more information to see um, what, what security that would provide you.
It says. A or federal issued photo? Military ID. Is a photo required? Photo ID? Yes, yes.
Why are we excluding military identification?
Oh, we would like Rob here to tell you.
Sorry.
Well, I thought we did, but I think we put excluding military before identification, which threw me off in my reading, but I see where it was in there.
Is state and federal capitalized?
I would have put ID behind it anyway. When you put ID behind photo? ID excluding military identification. I, I, that's what I would have put as well. So are we gonna put a, and I can't tell if you put a note there, so sorry. Like, if you did, but put a note there about the municipal, it's not a municipal ID, but the KCK, it's called a KCK ID, is what the website calls it.
Yes, but it is different than the community ID and they do, I just looked that up too and they do, they search their databases and.
We will confirm your identity utilizing police database information. So as long as you're not in it? So as long as you're not in it, haven't been arrested, that's the vetting process? I don't know. Other ID, um, I've never been arrested, but I've got fingerprints on file of the state, the KBI. Cause I had to for law school. So, I mean, there are reasons that people.
Yeah.
Like, look, I do this all day. Here, take my retina. Come on, Janetta, I could be a customer here.
We'll need the photo ID.
Clearly, not my military, because I don't have one. Um, I mean, I have reworded some things there. I, I guess, are we just gonna do the move past them? If nobody has questions or comments, and I'm fine with that. Right. Yeah. What I had was maybe put an identification behind there in front of. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm otherwise good with everything you've got there.
Do you want? Okay, so photo ID.
Identification. Thank you. You know, that was gonna rain on me if we didn't.
Excluding military.
Okay. Um, you can put a comment here on service fee. You know, I'm back to that, back, back to what we call it.
Are we on? Okay, good, nice.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, we skipped over.
Looks like we're missing. Service fee set up.
Uh, yeah, that should be set up account should be, uh, deleted. The service fee as set forth in the fee schedule is what that should be. Is assessed on the initial, well, that accurate? That, that's what happens? The service fee. That accurate, that, that's what happens, the service fee? Staff, is that accurate?
That should be.
That a service fee is?
Yes.
Only on the initial bill?
Yes.
Okay, so let's get back to all the service fee, what, and we know what it's for. Can we call it something else? I'm gonna keep asking on that one.
Can we cut something other than the service fee?
Mm-hmm.
Like after. Number four used to be.
Not used to be that.
Sorry.
It didn't like that, sometimes the service.
Is already connected.
Why do you, can you, uh, open?
Yeah, you've got a comment, service initiation fee or activation fee, account activation fee. I mean, it's that, yeah. Either of those make sense.
Anyone?
Either one of those is gonna be.
Yeah, we charge a service fee once we set up permanent service. We give it to new bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we will.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost like he said.
It is, it is permanent account because.
So, yeah.
Bye, Gary.
Most positive state, but it'll all be capitalized. So what's, what's the channel set up?
Well.
Because you're setting it there.
We'll hash it out. We're gonna capitalize one, we're capitalizing the other, if we're not going to do it, then we're not going to do it, and that's fine by me too.
I'm grammatically challenged, so I don't care.
I mean, I get paid every day not to be grammatically challenged, and what do I know? Service initiation fee. Wait, wait, you all have discussed it as a panel.
Let me just.
Yeah, make reviews, we can play rock.
Yeah, we scissors.
Finish it.
I will, I, I like service initiation fee, like it makes sense to me, but I know what you're saying, I understand your point, but, but.
Well, because if they have a teen service, they're still getting served. They don't charge it at that.
Right, that's when we add the service fee, what is called now. So a temporary, they don't, because I think they pay, I'm not sure with that.
They could add them all for that.
Right.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Hold on now, we're talking about a temporary service, right?
Yes.
So a temporary service has a fee at the beginning attached to it of some kind.
Does it, they have a charge, they don't pay the, the service they need to.
What, what's the charge?
A temp panel?
Yeah.
The temp panel. For the use of a temp panel.
Okay, so is that in the fee schedule?
Probably on the electric side, yeah.
Yes. It is not technically like a fee.
I guess fees are technically are easy.
So I guess that was.
There we are.
Service initiation, I like account, but they were saying they already had in this, well, Mark, he likes to go there. Mark said they already have an account and I said they already have service.
Do we need to add the word permanent into one of those?
Can you define permanent?
Uh, yeah, non-temporary account activation fee.
Well, but if, but if you have a temporary service and and there's another component of another policy that applies to that, I mean, we're not saying that it's. Do, do temporary services, do they have accounts?
Yes.
That's why I wanted to count, but it's a service, so. Either one of them.
Players like, how's that all?
What do you think, all the U D counts?
That's why I said I, I like a new service, I like initiation.
She's the.
I like the initiation.
Anyone?
Abby, what are they called as in other utilities?
Uh, Wester used to call it a start service fee. Or it's. Um, there's a customer charge, is that different than this?
Yeah, cause we have, yeah, we have.
Customer charge, so yeah, for the month, at Wester, we call that a start service fee.
Service initiation fee? Done.
If it's already, say. Yes, we initiated it in your name.
So that'll need to be changed on the fee schedule?
And I'm assuming I need to add initiation between service fee and not.
Yes, sir. Please.
What does? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, regretting starting down this path already. Capitalizing, are we, are we putting a definition for service initiation fee? Is that why it's capitalized? The service is defined.
It's a sin.
And fee schedule is defined, but we don't have.
But we, but we should because.
It's honesty, yeah.
What is this for, and we've already said, you know, we previously said in here what this is for. So let the words what it's for up above, so it's, uh, not sure I put process information, I think I just go with it's just to set up an account. That's just me though. Not my charge.
We probably need a comment that we need to find that.
Or just put a placeholder up above for it. Service initiation fee. Rick, we're much nicer to you than we are to Rob. Without this problem.
Please.
And thank you.
Is it the definition now? Is it just what I get, is okay, are we putting it in now?
Now, we can.
Would you like? It's saved now.
Thank you.
Um, I'm down in the last paragraph of four dot zero one, if anybody, uh, if anybody has anything else before that.
For me.
That's good.
Um, I don't know if available or eligible is the correct word to use there, or some other word in that very last sentence in four dot zero one. What surge now?
Surge, the people that have, that have some surge protectors on meters.
Oh, okay.
So that's available to everybody, but not.
We don't.
So they can't have that, it's a game base, they can't have some surge.
Well, what it previously said was it will have all services established at account creation, so it may just be that.
Yeah, that, cause otherwise we're saying we will do something.
That's right.
Yeah, I like.
So just delete the.
Available eligible.
Available eligible, we're good. Um, four dot zero two, I just reworded that there at the very end, I don't know if.
We've gone from at least to within one?
Um. We could say within at least one. I mean, I don't.
Yeah.
I, I just didn't like the case that you will require, I mean.
Yeah.
To me, that's just.
No, we've just flipped which direction it's open ended, right? At least one business day means we could take twelve, which I hope we would not, but.
Well, what's the real number that we need?
Right.
Because that's the number we put. If it's more than one business day, then we need to say.
Right.
Within two business days or whatever that is. So change of billing. Change of occupancy, other sort of change, how long does it take us to process those for real?
Set, patients, it says forty-eight hours.
Wouldn't you be consistent with that, within two business days or forty-eight hours?
Well, it's not gonna be forty-eight non-business hours, so, right, I mean, so within two business days? No, no. We, we need three business days. I mean. Two, two should work.
Should be working. Yes.
Do you ever not meet the two days?
Unless like the customer needs more information, like they didn't send out their documents, but if not, no, that hasn't happened.
And that, and I think that's on a part of the letter too, it may be, it may be more than forty-eight hours if all the information that is needed to establish a service, a request to establish services are provided. So maybe there's two people or three people that are on the lease or the closing statement and only two of them send in their information. We have to wait until we get all the, the necessary information to set the accounts. I think that's understood.
This was discontinuing.
So do you want to qualify that? To say that the information has to be timely received or all?
Or complete. Once information is complete.
Well, complete by who? I mean, we have to receive it, right?
We have to receive the completed.
We have to receive all.
All the information.
Can we say applicable? Required, what do you want to say? When all required information is timely received by KCBPU, now you made me add words, I'm sorry, but.
I would take.
We took out some earlier.
Well, but if we have a, if we're gonna process it in two business days. I mean, so is it two business days from when?
From when all the information's been received, yeah.
Then we're gonna need to reword this.
IPPU and administrative.
So help me understand this, if I am moving out of a house and I say I want my service canceled.
June seventh.
Cause somebody else is moving in. I'm responsible until that person moving in sets up service?
Okay, once your account final, we'll final.
Okay.
So if you.
Like, this is for, cause we're talking about discontinuing service, okay?
So we have some customers that don't call us and then the new tenant never signs, we've run into that, so that's how we.
I got you, yeah, okay, okay. Okay. Thank you.
I guess I was just caught up in the verbiage when we're talking about discontinuing service, where this is talking about the transfer of service. Or change.
Yeah, we're kinda bouncing back and forth between those two parts.
Yeah, well, it says discontinuing of service, but there's a lot of verbiage there regarding changing service.
Well, and when I made my comment on the one, within one business day, it was that second section where it was the uh, change in occupancy or other legal billing responsibility. At the bottom of paragraph, I don't know if it's paragraph one or paragraph two now. Where it had been changed from will require at least one business day. So is it within two business days on both parts, on that there and the top part? Like what is the, the practice?
Uh, it is two business days now, we went to my meter, they changed that to match for the start service.
Okay, so the, the paragraph that begins when a change of occupancy should be a new paragraph, right? So let's try to, let's try to separate these concepts, so we're dealing with discontinuance on one hand and a change of service on the other, right? Okay, so discontinuance, that's the one business day in advance, right? That's what the customer's gotta give you, one day in business day in advance.
Although are we saying two now?
So if they submit the request online, like that's what I'm thinking of, if a customer calls over the phone, we do it as soon as the next day. And if they email, um, we normally do get it done the very next day, like we'll, we work the request in the morning and process it for the next day. We always just say two in case the system's down or we have any system issues and we're not able to process it. But if they call in over the phone, we do final with the next day.
So we're on two business days in that first?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you've got it already. Confirming.
And so, um. The. The, the tense that we're using for these things is driving me insane, I'm not gonna lie. I mean, this notice of change shall be given to the KCB, okay, so customer shall notify, I mean, why are we not saying that? It's killing me, can we change it? I don't know why I'm looking at you, you're like, you've already done all this other stuff, why wouldn't you just change it now, Rip? I mean, just to say it in reverse, just less words. A little bit less words.
Say it how you wanna say it.
Thank you, John Mayer. Say what you need to say. Um. Hang on, give me a second. That wasn't that much, um. So I think if we start out that sentence, customer shall notify KCBPU. And then go to lowercase w on when. Second paragraph.
At the bottom.
Okay.
So customer shall notify KCBPU. Lowercase w on the when.
These are confused together.
Yes, one word.
And so the second line, any service being rendered, I think you can drop by KCBPU. Okay, so comma, and here, and then say, uh, insert this language, and. Is I? Yeah. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, drop all that, the notice of this change. Drop that through customer. Yep. And, after and. When all required information is received. By KC BPU. Comma. It will. Process the request within two business days. That work?
Yeah.
Take it.
I didn't want to say it again, I didn't want to say KC BPU again, I want to say the utility, I don't.
I just.
Well, it's not a they, it's not a, I guess it could be a we, because we do say our, right, in here, do we?
Yes, but does it refer to the direct object in the sentence? This is where it's.
I'm figuring out a way to take that out, but, um.
We.
Well.
I was gonna say upon receipt by the.
Such process.
It might be overstating this, it probably works.
I'm just gonna say the, it will, the process.
You'd say such change will be, because that's what we're talking about, a change of something, right? Such change will. Be processed.
Request will be.
Yeah, that's.
Ah, there you go, thank you.
I kept trying to say, but it just would not come out right, tomorrow I did it, I was like, no. Request will be processed within two business days. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So it just means the request.
Yes.
And then take out the request.
Right there.
Please, thank you. Trying to treat it better.
Um, that last paragraph there, it just doesn't read right to me, and I don't, I can't fix, I couldn't fix it. So, if, if you all think it reads correctly, then that's fine.
I didn't like it either.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Maybe in case of rental property, when services are terminated at the request of the tenant, the owner may contract in writing for services to be continued automatically, just move that one.
It's like everything needs to be reversed.
Yeah.
Not everything, but.
And then I didn't understand, if the landlord has any outstanding debt, the services will not be reverted. And the outstanding debt must be paid before the services will be reverted. Anyway, just rework that one sentence, move it up. Made more sense to me.
I think it should say. If the landlord has any outstanding debt, services will not be reverted until. The debt is paid, or the services will not be reverted.
We call this revert to owner.
Revert to landlord.
Want to say, in the case of a rental property, um, revert to owner request may be made for services. I mean, that's what it is, it's revert to owner, right?
Revert to landlord, that's.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, well, they're typically the owner.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, she's saying that because on our form it's called.
I was just saying.
So instead of, yeah, we could call it revert to landlord. In cases of a rental property, revert to landlord, uh, may be requested for services um, to continue automatically. Do we have accounts flagged as revert to landlord? Yes, okay.
That's right.
I'm sorry, in case of, and maybe I'm not saying it right.
You're saying it right.
Case of rental property, uh, a revert to landlord, because that's what we call it, right? A revert to landlord may be requested. And then take out the owner may contract in writing for services to be continued automatically. And then we can take out, um, the owner's name with full responsibility for payment of services thereafter.
Okay, so the for services to be continued automatically, or take that out as well.
Uh, in the case of rental property, a revert to landlord may be requested for services to be continued automatically with, and then take out, yeah, in the owner's name with full responsibility continued. There you go, delete that, with full responsibility for payment of all services thereafter delivered.
But isn't all of that incumbent upon the tenant terminating service? So to Tom's point, that has to go at the beginning. Because the landlord is who requests the reversion, right?
Yes. But sometimes landlord calls, like, tenant doesn't call, and they'll just go and say the tenant left, he needs to revert the services, so either. Yeah. They need to check applications. But is it at the request of the tenant or at landlord, you said it could be.
Either or.
Either or, right. So does that phrase need to be in there?
Okay, so, I'm out in the world, I'm just a customer BPU, and I don't know anything about any of this, I don't know what a revert to landlord is, right? So. No, I, I don't want to, I don't want to define it, I mean, and I know that you all are making fun of me, and that's fine. This is going to be a really, really good document when we're all done, and you all should be proud of the work you're doing with it. Whether we have definitions or not. At the end of the day.
So are you saying that, that you would know as a, as an owner?
No, as a tenant, she's.
As a general public. ACK resident, I don't know what, I know what the words revert to landlord mean, and I'm just saying.
So were you saying to put this in the definition?
No, 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 no.
What are you saying?
Nope. Can I just say what I want to say? Thank you. So, I'm just saying, should it be a landlord may request that services revert to the landlord, I mean, using your terminology or the industry terminology. I'm, maybe I'm.
I like that.
That'd be better.
Getting really cranky.
Would that be better on the website, like landlord? You know, like landlords, and then you want to revert to landlord or something.
I don't know, I'm gonna. They don't read them then.
Right.
They don't read them then.
It's family time.
You can spell it out more, right? Yeah.
So, so now we're dealing with three different topics in four dot zero two, we're dealing with discontinuance, a change of service, and a revert to landlord situation, right? So should we add all of those in the title? You're still on the same page.
To landlord is a change for how.
Well, this is, I mean, we're going to be doing sub, well, I assume.
I mean, since they're all in there.
But like, if I'm looking for something and say, oh, what's the policy on whatever, it helps me to be like, oh, it's in the title, it must be there, right? So I, I just.
Oh, yeah, so, but what's, uh, place needs a discontinued service in part, or?
Well, yeah, I mean.
What is the overall better one for? Provider for is request for service and discontinued service. And change. Yeah, it's kind of. If you put something like that in there, it covers all of our bases.
Then you want to be like four dot oh three, change of service. If we do do a four dot oh three, would that last paragraph need to bump up? To be like the second paragraph with four dot oh two, and then make four dot oh three be middle two? Because the bottom one kind of covers discontinuing service.
Well, does it really cover discontinuing service, because you're really asking for it to be.
Correct.
Continued.
But.
I mean, somebody's asking for it to be discontinued, but also, somebody's also asking for it to continue in some form, so I don't know.
Catenary grouping.
That can always change.
What?
Titles can always change.
I don't know.
Start, stop, transfer, and that's starting, stopping, or transferring service.
Are there situations where the landlord requests that services are terminated, and then also then auto- automatically requests they revert?
Yeah, we've had that before. Landlord can call and say they want the service stopped, yes, if what fits in their name, yes.
And they can, if they're not on, if they're not the primary or secondary account holder, can they make that change?
No, definitely on the account.
So the landlord is on the account?
If the account, I'm saying, if the account's in his name, he can request the final, he can request the stop. So we'll automatically revert it, and then if he wants services turned off, he can call him. I mean, I don't know why they would do that, I'm not going to say we're branding that, but, yeah, I mean, if they call and say they want them off, we're not going to tell them, or it's not going to turn them off.
On the third paragraph, this outgoing required, the customer shall be responsible for all services rendered until a notice received by BPU, I don't think outgoing. When you come back. Quick response. I might have to rush back, I didn't want you to get used to it. What was your question on that one?
Rose said we're not changing it. You're saying we should take that, you said we should take that sentence out, right?
Just, I think outgoing is the only word you don't need, the customer shall be responsible until we receive notice, I don't think you need the word ever.
Oh, what if it's in?
What if the notice of change doesn't include all the information? And we're not going to let, a couple dollars.
I'm not going to, you're incoming.
So rob with that.
I could say, but I'm not on your account, so I will have my own account, and you leave, and I will be responsible for all of my services. Also, the account holder shall be responsible for all services rendered until the notice changes. Or we could go to primary account holders. That's what we used earlier.
I don't know.
I think outgoing helps. I mean, I think it works without it, but. I'm usually the, let's delete the words guy, but in this case, I think it adds some clarity.
Okay, so the last paragraph there, um. Fourth line down. After thereafter delivered. So when services are terminated. At the request of any tenant, that needs to be deleted because it was moved up to the front. I mean, I think so, but.
Yeah. I like it. And it should say any outstanding balance or in outstanding balance.
Quick, you're getting down to letters now. We just delete letters.
I think and makes more sense.
Unless we don't want to start on security deposits, I, what are the rules, can we, can we terminate the meeting early? If we want to?
How is it, no?
Nine to twelve.
Thanks.
Well, I mean, we're not going to get very far in security deposits.
It's not, it's not like an executive session where they're waiting to see if you go back into session to take action.
Rather than I thought.
Could move to adjourn early.
Uh, Mr. President, before we start a new section in security deposits, I would move that we, uh, adjourn today's meeting early.
Second. Okay, so then move to second, is that we adjourn, uh, this policy committee meeting at, uh, eleven thirty to twelve o'clock, call, babe, roll call, please.
Roll call, Parker.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Well, Vanny Henry.
Aye.
That motion carries, this meeting is adjourned.